I was cussing with another man. And you know what I would do? Give me the kind of a doctor. I would be depressed and that's just a miserable thing. Cussing every day. I said one of the scholars, all the things that going on in there. In the state of this place. It's gotta be a damn good one. I don't know how to call it. Always. They take the most. Thank you. Because for you can be proud of the thank you and the love. Thank you for all the blessing you have given us. We are not without you for you can have the comfort. We are not without you in my soul. For our freedom is yours. If you were here for the benefit of this, doesn't mean for the best for me now. I pray that my son will always. You will give me your love and your compassion. I did that, you know, I mean, I forget what I'm saying, but you have been my companion. I pray for the company, I pray for the state, I pray for the president. I pray for the president, I pray for the office. I pray for the business as well. I pray for peace, the peace that you feel that the past, that all of this damage. This is the kind of thing I follow. Everything's taken down here. I mean, nothing. You know, on all three hundred.
I pledge a salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dexter Onsted.
Present.
Mrs. Kristen Chansky.
Present.
Mr. Michael Chee.
Present.
Mr. Kyle Kliniken.
Present.
Mr. Jason McCray.
Here, present.
Mr. Keith Mills.
Here.
Mr. Richard Oliver.
Here.
Dr. Chris Yocoin.
Here.
President Lewis King.
Here. Rebel home. Your borders are full of jeopardy. We're looking to a great. Thank you for that. Please address. Question for your wife. Not all the favors. From the property. Wait for the dinner, old Jim. About the maintenance from late six, not a quarter for the jeopardy. I do about a little.
Motion.
What am I to say?
Second.
I'm going to get the roster. Please stretch. Question for the ones. You have a party, five.
Aha.
In the home. Both of you. I would like to move ahead and make sure to leave the meeting. I'm going to go get the session. Take them in north and half the country.
The Marsan House was donated to y'all, I think, back in nineteen forty-two. So the jury owns it. Y'all entered into an agreement with True Hearts. True Hearts is there to manage the property for y'all. So what type of questions do y'all have about that?
My question, if you remember, was how do we keep it? Because True Heart, from what I read, has a lease in perpetuity. And Mr. Marsan wants to start taking care of the house. So my question was, can you absolve the parish police duty of maintenance responsibilities? And to work the contract that Mr. Marsan's agreed to, to waive any improvements that he needs necessary to the Marsan House?
We can do that. Do they have any representatives from True Heart here tonight?
No, sir.
They were here a long ago.
Monaco.
Yeah. Mr. Marsan came. So, I mean.
And I think he was with some representatives of True Heart at that time.
He was.
He was.
He was.
So if they are, they are okay with it.
Yes.
We can change it any way y'all want to change it.
So we'll, we'll be shared of all responsibilities from the Marsan House then?
We'll probably pretty much share of all the.
What is it now?
Yeah, I'm talking about, because we've been maintaining, cutting the grass and stuff there.
And I think that might be by choice too. If you wanted to get them to do it now, I would think to get them to do it now.
Well, from what you told me, they want to make some renovations to the house. And, but he wants some assurance that stays with True Heart before he commits. But also, unless, unless I read it wrong, we're still responsible for the maintenance side. They've taken, True Hearts taken on a couple, Mr. Marsan likes that.
I like to do all my decisions.
But that's, that's, that's what we want to do.
Right.
That's, that's my suggestion.
Mr. Marsan wants to buy it back.
He can't buy it.
Can't buy it.
Yeah. And he understood that. He understood that when we told him that. Say, you remember, we met right there at the little alleyway, talked to, of this about it. Mr. Marsan, I think it was his wife. And they agreed to do all the maintenance side, to absolve the parish police duty of all responsibilities to it. And that's, to me, was the easiest way to keep it. And True Heart, a control would also give Mr. Marsan his control that he wants so he can put the money into it. And the, the lease that I read, Sam Craig, wrong, is for True Hearts in perpetuity. It never goes away.
Never goes away.
So all you're doing basically, like, Mr. McCray wants you to absorb the duty of all responsibility for it. It all falls on them. And it's a win-win for everybody. It's going to be maintained to a higher standard than what it is right now. And it stays with the Marsan family, is what he wants.
So if I can get his contact numbers, I can call him and I can call him, we can get something together. And it's just my understanding that y'all just want to relinquish pretty much everything except the ownership to them. Is that right?
A fact was not being said, he wants to leave it, that he's going to leave the fund. To go with the house. That will be continuously allowed in perpetuity to.
Yeah. But, but yes, like I said, Mr. Oliver said, he's willing to put the money up. So the money will be there.
It's a family, it's a family.
Yeah.
So you want to just address it at the next meeting? I thought.
Yeah. We could go on the agenda, but hopefully in the next two weeks, we'll have a contract, something that you've worked out. But I'm sure they, Mr. Marsan got a turn he's wanting to use too. So we can get, we'll send you the contact information from Mr. Marsan and get him to buy it tomorrow.
That sounds good.
Can we actually absolve anybody?
Yeah.
And y'all are pretty much absolved of any liability now.
Okay.
It's just the, some of the maintenance and some of the upcoming and things like that. I think, you know, y'all just want to get everything else down.
We're going to see rather.
Unless you're taking it to the. This one is current, they have to have necessary. It's new for the one. You know, it, please, please, if you, it's really to do.
Yeah, that's, uh, if you look in your packet, it has, uh, ten dash seven two are nuisance ordinance. And item E discusses necessary and authorized noises and any violations, including animal noises. If you flip on the backside of the document, it is revised statute three colon three six zero two, which is the state's law. And you go to bullet point seven. Uh, this is a exemption from any local ordinance by local government. It says agriculture products means crops. And the two that apply in my district would be livestock and poultry. And so what I'm asking for is to change our ordinance to reflect that, that, uh, the poultry and livestock would be included, or excluded, I should say, from the governance of the animal noises. Current gives it to the local, to the state law. Uh, basically, in my district, uh, there are adjacent properties, um, residents here, uh, farm here with chickens. And the adjacent residents aren't complaining of bushido noise. Well, the way our ordinance locally is written, uh, it will be in violation. But because the state law supersedes our ordinance, it says that you cannot, at the local level, govern the animal noise for the farm operation. And they're in conflict with the local with the state, state supremacy.
I guess Marsan said a public hearing stating that we want to change it.
I know that one.
We need our order.
That's, that's what I was saying.
Mr. Pliggett, what, what ordinance number was ours?
Ours, uh, what I have here is section ten dash seventy-two. And I believe it's a point something, but I can't see it with the whole punch. Please remove that number. And it's bullet point E, isn't Edward?
You just want to take that out, the E, correct?
Just take, take livestock and poultry out.
These, I think these just say.
Well, I, I think, I, I think though the difference is, is that we need to say something to the effect of excluding agricultural animals. Because if you take out all animals, noise violations, then there would be no recourse for other types of animals that are not protected in state law. So I would say we need to have something to the effect of excluding agricultural animals.
So you just want ours to be there?
Yes. Yes. Republics, uh, at least in my case, and I'm sure it would be the same if she was on the other foot in your districts, then when the residents read our ordinance, they say, well, you can do something about this issue. And I'm like, but in actuality, you can't, you can't. And so to preempt all that happening again in all the other districts, that's why I'm trying to address it now.
So we understand, but instead of purchases, I mean, our one, this crew, agriculture not happening.
Yes, sir. Yes, motion.
You want to stretch? All the favor?
Aha.
In the home, what you can, what you can appropriate, eliminate all.
Yeah, advertise for.
If this is, um, that's the only thing we're doing, just adding excluding agricultural animals. I can, if that's what we have, um, public hearing. Basically, before June seventeen, but I'll get it all in, out, maybe five and maybe five thirty.
Okay. Five thirty.
Five or five thirty, I'm not sure. We have already four, um.
Is that, you have to advertise that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I know we have a public hearing coming up, and I don't know if it's on the third or on the seventeenth, for your, um, mileage. Oh, if the mileage is on the seventeenth, we'll be down at five o'clock.
The thing we do is, is go and clarify if you're taking our own county thing or the old school and back to.
Did y'all just want to tour now? That's, you mentioned, I tried to. You know, we were saying, when you mentioned back listening to the tape, and everybody said. We can look at, we can get it to.
Well, we were all, people was to, you know, we're trying to put the Marsan, put them all up for bid. So, same, put it up the Marsan House, uh, the, the, it would be to either move or disassemble the house, not the property. I think that's what we're discussing.
Okay, but, so we want to get it to wait. We want to get it for salvage and then bid for just demolition. Because if nobody comes for salvage, and help the here was going, and you, you're in a commercial business, you think anybody would come salvage that house? Hate to put you on the spot, but I mean, I'm just.
Well, I'm sure. I'm sure. I'm sure. I'm sure. I'm sure. I'm sure. It's what happened, they, you know, they're trying to fix you there.
And there's also, I believe, um, records and stuff.
Oh, yeah, but yeah, I mean, that's why we can't do anything with it. My family's got to get everything.
Well, if you were to record it.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I'd like there to be chairs and courthouse there.
Oh, yeah, that's somebody that they walking in there, it's just a whole site, a big thing, and I thought that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just tear it down, but I, they just don't, you know, piece of that, and it's just, it's been there. They go down and do this now.
Will it have its best.
I'm sorry.
Will it have its best.
That's another question.
I have a question.
I have a, a possible question.
Go, go building like this, yeah, indeed.
But you can like to get.
I would kind of be excited.
What do you think? You say we can find anybody to salvage?
Yeah, I've actually talked to a couple of different contractors that are interested. Um, the only thing that I think that needs to be addressed is the storage of the courtroom materials, or extra courtroom chairs, and different things like that, that we're storing in the, in the second story. So, uh, we'll obviously have to try to find a, sort of a hope for that.
Yeah, we should. We talked about storing all that B W building, you know, I know.
There's our furniture in there too. Um.
We had this kind of trailer right on the corner, but, but.
But any of the wood in there that's inside, that's very high, that's what I'm. It's very valuable. The beams are very valuable. But it's a house.
Could have a perfect in the trailer, like on the corner. We didn't want to.
I'm also salvaged.
Yes, I was saying, he has a lot of separate side beams, that's what I'm. And you're going to have a special shingles there. So, that's going to be an expense to hold.
Were the people interested in salvaging it, or they was interested in tearing it down for the.
They want the wood out of the. And with that being said, uh, Mr. Williams, uh, the bestest, they probably have to get like enough, that's.
It's not cheap.
That's wrong.
It's not cheap.
Exactly. They just came up and go to work on.
And you got to close it, you got to do all kinds of.
Yeah, just like you got a crime scene over there last.
Very highly regulated.
That's right. That's right.
So y'all, y'all want to look at doing that, then? And then we will take and look at tomorrow, that building over there next to the restaurant owners. Does Frosty have it?
No, no. At the, at the normal home.
Yeah. So we can look and see how much it would go in there. And again, I don't know, I think you said Frosty has some spots over in the D W.
There's a closet over there.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll go.
We just need to go inventory over there and see exactly how many rooms we can take out.
Okay. We, we'll do that tomorrow. And then if you're going to do it this way, you're going to have to bid it, right, Sam?
Mm-hmm.
You're going to have to bid it out. The demolition work, so. Can you, can you do, if you got two companies, if you just don't have two companies, can you just do a, a R F deal for those two companies without doing a bid? And, and let them give you a price or, or do you need to, I'm asking.
I think it would be safer to bid it.
Okay.
Because when you bid it, you're going to let everybody in the community know.
Well, in the R F P, you do the same thing, even if everybody knows it. So your suggestion is bid it.
Yeah, you know, they may have a lot of people that have a lot of sentimental value to it as well.
For bid is worth paying, we pay you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And R F P does the same thing, it's just what you pay.
Critical approval.
Yeah. But no, we, we, we're going to put that bid package together with them. You're going to work on that?
Yeah, I could, uh, you're just going to have to tell us the terms and conditions of that too. I can come up with some things.
What could we, like?
We're going to get it appraised then. Yeah, I just thought about that. It, it's got to be a price, it's got to attach a value to it, and it can't go a little bit back to you. And how you're going to do that?
It's going to pay off square footage. It's going to be astronomical.
That's what I'm saying, but you have. I mean.
It's going to be astronomical.
But, but there again, from a legal standpoint, you got to have a starting point. You just can't give away governmental property. I mean, you, you got, you got to have a bottom set somewhere.
But we didn't clear that.
Yeah, yeah, you declare surplus, but you still have to have a bottom. I mean, you, you can't, somebody has to.
Yeah, we need to establish a minimum.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I would do that.
Which, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So which is going to cost you more money. Can, can you not talk about this tomorrow? You, you got time tomorrow, or you can tie it in the corner?
In the morning. Yeah, I'll, I'll have time tomorrow.
In the morning?
Y'all, y'all want to just address it? All right, move, uh, have y'all declared the surplus yet?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, if we do it tonight, I can simply do it tonight, because you started, that way we can, or you can tell me which, which direction to go in. From a legal standpoint.
How's it listed on the agenda? Is it an action item that we can take action on?
Yeah. It's going to clarify actions.
They'll can clarify.
Okay. So y'all declared the surplus already, so if y'all want to, just say that y'all want to have it appraised and then put it up for bids on the salvage. So when you have it appraised, you need to have it appraised with the salvage value instead of the value of it.
Okay.
So I think.
Which, which may have better known.
You're not going to be able to move that building.
Yeah. But there again, if, if you take it for salvage, correct the same, I'm wrong, that's me going in there tearing apart. Yeah, so whether you move it or not, I mean, it, it doesn't matter. All, all we need is somebody to tell us how possibly it works. And, and since you're a building, you probably can't use a gym, huh?
So.
No, it's safer to get somebody.
You do, you have somebody that does that type of work, I'm sure that has some.
You know, also, we want to get to, well, you know, when Jeff's saying, uh, they talk about, uh, you know, the, the prices, beams and stuff, and yeah, what we need to do, what they want, and just say, okay, we want to get, hit the pieces out here.
Oh, no. No, no.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. It's all, yeah.
So we just want to make sure.
It's all verified.
They need to salvage it easy.
Oh, the salvage is going to be, you go inside, what you make, you all off the rest of it. And it's, it's all.
So, so who is responsible if the building does have asbestos? Is it, is it, is it required for us to inform them if there's asbestos in there? Or do they take that responsibility when?
They're going to look when they're saying what they're. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's a.
If there's asbestos, if there's asbestos in it, and we know it, and don't disclose it.
You know, there's, there's things which is for life. There's things which is for life.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so.
Well, whoever's going to come out and do the asbestos on it, I mean, the appraisal on it should be able to. They have some reputable companies. I think, uh, Wesley Young School Board used one a couple of years ago. They tore the old school down, they actually tore it down themselves. They had to have some asbestos removed from that. And you would, uh, contact the school board over there, they can give us the people that, that stopped it.
And I'll check and see tomorrow, but because I don't know if the jurors remember, this conversation came up when Mr. Um, William Kent was on the board before, about demolition, if they deal with, and something stopped it possibly, I don't know if that's what it was, but I will be, you know, I can. I don't know if you all remember that.
But they didn't just get personal, you know.
I, I was just going to say, you can do an appraisal for a salvaged or appreciated value.
I think, I think it was. Next time you turn up, move it. Take after them for political and justice, so you can show it. Pass it, Mr. Williams.
Good evening. You guys should have something in your packet. Okay. Uh, you should have had a proposal in your packet. Um, this is for the removal of the jail. And, uh, I have the permission, David, and, uh, and the third of this. Uh, it's pretty simple, you got one page here. The, uh, the jail comes up for removal in June. And, um, if you look at your proposal there, you'll see the building coverage amount. You have some contents coverage and that's some business interruption coverage. Uh, there is a change this year to the wind inhaler deductible from last year. It was a one percent deductible. And this year it's a two percent deductible. And I put what two percent of that, um, coverage value is out to the side. The wind inhaler deductible would be a hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred. So, uh, at one percent, it was still a big deductible. And last year, all the jails chose to, 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 a wind buy down option. Uh, this is something that you did last year, where you bought down the one percent deductible to a lower deductible. And so if you look down at the bottom of your sheet there, I have two buy down options. And, um, really the one that, that makes the most sense to me, if you wanted to do it, would be to buy down to a ten thousand dollar deductible. Because that's the same as the regular deductible that, that you have on the policy of it. The, the cost for the, the base policy is forty-five thousand one hundred and thirty. And then you can see the cost there if you wanted to exercise the wind buy down option. Which, uh, is a pretty good idea, because you can reduce that wind deductible from a hundred and twenty-nine thousand down to ten thousand. So you got, you got a choice that you would need to, to make really is, do you want to, to purchase the wind deductible buy down again? And if you do, would you want to, to reduce it to a five thousand dollar deductible or a ten? I think ten would make sense.
But last year we paid forty-eight five plus the wind, plus the.
No, last year the total of forty-eight five, so.
So this year will be forty-five.
This year will be forty-five, plus either sixteen or fourteen. So if you did the, if you did the ten thousand dollar option, you'd be about five thousand.
What did we do last year?
You, um, you did the five thousand dollar deductible last year. But it's more expensive this year, because instead of buying down from one percent, you're buying down.
Two, two, two percent.
Uh, and then the coverage on the building itself is a little bit more also, because you, you've still got construction costs and materials that are, that are still unplanned. And so the coverage on the building is up a little bit. Uh, but the main cost involved there is that, is the wind buy down option. So if you took the ten thousand, you'd, you'd be paying about nine thousand a year, or even more than what you did last year, about twenty percent.
I totally believe that you paid wind and hail for fifteen, ten. I would have put it in the same.
Uh, of course, I'm making a whole looking at what part of the wind hail, and what is that actual coverage? If something does happen, you know, I see you paying the deductible, but what is the actual, what do you, what is that dollar figure amount that you? For the, for the, for the wind and hail? That's correct. So it's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred would be the deductible if, if you, if the building is sustained, wind or hail damage. If, that's if you don't, that's if you don't take the buy down option.
You're asking us how much coverage.
Yeah. Oh, it's the building amount. It's the building amount. So it's five million eight hundred ninety thousand on the, on the. Now, y'all are familiar with the construction of the jail. I mean, the building is gorgeous. And so what you're talking about is, is roof. Um, and, and we put a roof, we, y'all had a plane, one roof out there in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and I would say it was, at that time, seventy-three thousand. Uh, so the roof would be more expensive. But you also have, let's say you have a storm come through and blow the roof off, and then the rain comes in. So you've got some additional damages. Water damage. Now, that's not as bad as it would be, say, this building, because that building is concrete full of block walls, so. But you would have some, you would have more than just a roof damage.
I think y'all could be, we could claim the option too. I like to put that in a form of motion.
But I see McCray, anybody, just you, in discretion. Question for your honor, in the honor of the.
Aha.
In the home.
Thank you.
Okay, that's only being a real point, you just got to walk on, for the training.
I like motion. Second.
Five, seven.
That's it, you're so. Adapted why you need to eat this there, pardon you.
Motion.
I understand, but I'm sorry, but in discretion, question for your honor.
Aha.
In the home. Thank you, uh, on proving gave you the letter with P D C for gold project.
And this is just their standard of gave.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Motion. Yes, sir.
Question for the order, yes, in a moment. Okay, take that from the question, three minutes.
Probably not gonna have this conversation, and what he would like to do is buy some tempers and some, uh, what y'all call them, uh, rubber caps, just just keep them stocked.
We have been doing it some some other in the past, we have kind of kept.
We keep them stocked.
Okay.
Y'all know when the emergency come up and we get this bridge on the route, we had to wait, it took like forty days, almost, I mean, another six weeks before we could get those tempers in.
And this, before we argue, I I will get with you all and, uh, give y'all a number of what is going to cost. But it's something that I believe that we really need, because there's one right there that's died though, they just inspected it, and it's got some issues that we might have to replace pretty soon. You know, we have to send a plan of action back to you, we're processing it back today. What's the state usually letter, you got seven days to send your plan back, or they just come shut the bridge down. So, but we also gotta have the materials to fix it.
You gotta work with the.
I would I would I would think it's gonna be, I came back and helped you create fifty thousand, any more than that, um.
Usually, yeah.
What what do you think? Okay, well, last time you were just eighty thousand.
I guess it just depends on. It well depends on what you get.
Okay, can I can I ask for a party to go up to a hundred thousand in a year? Because you're not looking at budget.
We can leave the price.
I mean, the road bridge has budget, I mean, it's just a healthy account. You know, I just make you do that stuff online, I mean, I'll pay you to be able to repair the stone.
Correctly, please.
Yeah.
Up to a hundred thousand.
I'm doing it.
Okay, that's y'all.
I'm doing it. Yeah.
Motion.
Okay.
Two more questions, in a moment, please.
Uh.
In a moment, please. Community staff, if the community don't have any, what's their community, is that crucial?
We need to have a meeting in order to, um, one of the things is to add the part about our employees all being essential workers. If we don't get that added, when we when it's time for FEMA, if we have a hurricane, um, we're gonna run into problems getting rid of first.
There's a question.
It needs to go in front of personnel, and we need to probably go ahead and finish, um, David's job description that we started and.
Can you leave me the collective?
Um, do we have a good time? I, Keith is gonna be out.
He's gonna be out too.
My idea is right now, he's, you up for it? For personnel to get, you think that's, okay.
You know, if he probably gonna be out, so you can't see that.
Okay, who gets it? You, pick it.
What do you talk for?
Okay.
I'll send an email for him, he said I can.
Can can I say something?
Please.
I thought, y'all, I got, when Chris and I thought, I don't think I'd like to have this, when y'all voted on it, at the June, or the meeting. Because if you wait, then you to the June, September meeting, I I want this done as fast as possible.
We gotta get it before hurricanes.
Yeah. Right. Yeah. And then, yeah, if 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 you do it next week, Kristen was fine, it just means.
I'll send an email. Any day, sir.
So Wednesday at?
Five thirty.
Five thirty?
It's coach.
Coach, Wednesday at five thirty? Okay.
Got three four hours.
Coach, you can't be here letting up oxygen.
All right, I'm sorry.
You got it. I was just thinking, is it the twenty-second at five thirty?
Five.
Mister Convent, I'd like to approve up the invoices of motion.
That's it.
I'm assuming the question, question for the order, in a moment. Mister, we have this, we call it.
Uh, I was, uh, just about to say, just about to come out of my mouth, so we are planning for the twenty-ninth, which would be next week. There was a conflict, we'd initially said ten AM, uh, we're thinking about eleven AM now, but we're gonna nail that down firmly.
Y'all, that's basically the reason we had to push it back, the bid openings are are ten o'clock in the morning, the road project.
About to be, right.
Yeah, the bid opens will be that that Monday morning, ten o'clock.
What they tell you?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, yeah, it'd be at ten o'clock.
All right.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it, that's it.
Just answer my question, I don't have anything.
Building property, do you visit out?
Uh, I don't have anything other than two items, just already, we've already done, I I'm good with lights and, uh, I didn't know about portion.
The question is. I'm gonna stay there.
This this is something I need you all to start thinking about, subdivision's coming up, I'll need to decide which size of lot y'all want. Uh, you know, that's gonna be up to you all, uh, it's Josh, you're here, Josh, you're down, okay. Sam, help me, it's it's gotta start with the plan, it's always.
Yes, that's.
Y'all talking about admitting the subdivision order?
Yeah, well, only a lot sizes for right now, and then and then we're gonna do the rest of it later. But I I believe to talk to the jury members, they won't block sizes none quickly, so as fast as we can block sizes. Is that a pleasure of you all?
Do we have anything now? To to, I mean, do we have anything in process now?
Can you?
Can?
Not, not on lot sizes, not on lot sizes. Y'all have been working before I got here, redoing the subdivision. We have put away a lot of ordinances and stuff, but to me, talking to you all, if you wanna keep what you got, and you need to do your lot sizes and do it quickly. As quick as you can, but if it if you got to go back to plan, it's always, it's always there, but you all need to give them some kind of direction to save what size y'all want. And then.
Jeff, what aside, what size of lots we have now?
All the, they go as small as.
Wow, I don't know, so at any point, the smallest ones are half acre, so I know you can list all half acre.
So it's twelve thousand five hundred per acre, and that's more or less for your second system, and that's the requirement, that's the minimum that you have to have. Now, obviously, we have setbacks and different things like that, that you have to kind of like, but if you're looking at twelve thousand five hundred per acre.
But basically, we're talking about any future subdivision right now, the rest of it, we've got.
You got you got four subdivisions?
Oh, I got three right there with me, I don't know.
Major, four major.
Yeah, I know exactly, yeah, oh, that's, wow, I got y'all up here, y'all, Sam, help me here.
Do y'all have a timeline to when somebody starts the subdivisions, where they have to have them, to put in? One on nine sixty-four, they've not done anything there in how long?
Supposed to be eighteen months.
Okay, eighteen.
Correct, I think it's eighteen months.
Yeah, it it all that's written out in the subdivision restriction, I just have, I'm not, I need to look at it.
Okay. You and my father need to sit down sometime next week, by an hour, you need to give me by an hour.
Yeah, just make the list, think what you go.
Yeah, I will. I understand. I think, yeah. So, what's, I mean, y'all got to give some direction to plan it, so.
When we talked about this, and I told you there was comprehensive, I don't know the history behind this, it's it's about ten years old, maybe a little bit older than that, but it talks about East Wilshire Parish, and it was put together. I'm not, I'm not sure, maybe somebody that's been on the jury remembers how it got put together, but I think there was a whole lot of money spent on this, and it talks about the rural uh, feel of the parish, and how they should enter into main highways and all that.
Yeah.
So, this may be something, can you see this?
Yeah.
I wish the meetings enabled in different areas, and then it all got put together, I can't really see them. There's a lot of draft, uh.
Well, it's ten years old, it needs to be updated.
Well, it needs to be updated, but it's the best we got.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Is a lot sizes in here?
Uh, this happened, what, fifteen years ago?
Not that long.
They've got a couple meetings in Jackson, they had. That's when we were putting together this plan, I can't remember.
I bet the state required it, that this had to be.
Thank you.
Twenty of our decisions, and I was on that, before that it was done.
Okay.
And, yeah, meetings were held, and it is supposed to be updated, like every five years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it never was.
I just, I just need y'all, if your plan is on some direction about what size, okay, look, you can save what size you want right now, you can always go back to change.
On the double, we said twelve thousand.
Yeah, but there again, do you want twelve thousand, you want bigger than that, I mean, what what are we, what are we trying to do?
Well, if you read that, you might want bigger.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, so, but you can't, my suggestion would be go with the, what some of the, you can always go back to change.
Well, even if we say anything out, it's not, I don't have an idea what number to throw out, I can just.
Like I say, to me, you 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 don't want acre, acre, and I have two acres.
Or 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 whatever, that's a pleasure of you all. Right.
I'm not, I'm not gonna suggest one one way or another. Two people are top two up here, they don't want anything less than an acre.
Well, the plan is only doing.
Yeah, but there's some some some, y'all need to give some direction, I think, though.
In the middle of the city, I've stayed there, correct the plan.
I need to know why, and the secretary of planning, they they want to look into, they need to look into.
Change, you have, the youngest question on the left.
The chair.
One acre is forty-five thousand five hundred sixty square feet.
See, so that's a start.
It's a start of an acre.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
So, I I just kinda wanna stress the importance of the lot size, okay, because you have large developers, but they have a business plan, okay, and their business plan only fits if they can make money on small tracks, and they wanna sell and stack as many houses as you can in here as you want. And personally, I don't want that for this.
Well, we probably gonna need to go for an acre again.
So that.
Let's start the number at an acre.
Okay, that's a good start. That's a good start.
You know what, you need to change. That way you try to have a comment in there for. So what do you have?
Some people can't afford two to three acres, you know, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, I'm trying to reach a meeting.
Yeah, so I don't want quarter acre house, quarter acre house.
You need, I'm touching you.
Yeah, your name fit with somebody else.
Right, right, off, yeah, my home, another bunch of edits.
Once they do their foothold again.
Yeah, that's what, so.
And look, I attended a meeting in Slaughter, where they wanted to put quarter acre blocks. And they wanted to put, I don't remember, seventy-five homes, you remember, out by the post office?
Get the infrastructure, gotta have the infrastructure to handle all that extra.
But also, this is strictly in your subdivision, so it's from your unincorporated district, you can still have one conventional bill and one non-conventional bill, doesn't mean you can have, if you have ten acres, you can have ten houses, right? So that that protects the public as well.
Well, let's just go with one acre.
Okay, I'll ask you a question, Sam, is this, is this is good, you can you can look at it, Sam?
I think so. It's just a discussion, it's not an action.
Yeah, but actually, what else?
We can move a little bit of water.
But y'all, you know, you don't really need to make a rec, I think that everybody knows the mindset, so, you know, when we talk next week, we can do it, you know, you're still a bit drawn at some tails a lot. Tails, lot numbers, lot sizes, and tails a lot.
Can they make the recommendations to plan it as often, or do they would like to late?
Well, it's just on there for the discussion. I would just say, see, it's not the public thing to see that, when you put your agenda out, and it said, we just wanted to discuss. Don't get it up in here, and you're in the middle of a meeting, and you say, hey, we discussed it, now we wanna.
No, we.
Well, and somebody might not have came to the meeting, because they didn't think that you were gonna hold.
Yeah.
Okay, I switched on.
Yeah, well, well, we we will fix the agendas from now on, where it's not.
Well, last thing, Jeff, discussion, I'm doing that. Okay, next only gentleman, uh.
It's Miss Quiggs.
Miss Quiggs.
Are you ready to talk for this?
Uh, next item on agenda is to recommend to hire Ms. Lorna Sinclair as senior permit technician. As you all well know, that this someone is no longer void years, so this is who I recommend to replace her.
Y'all will need the interview?
Yeah.
Coming out and get your ass going, man.
Uh, I believe. Maybe six.
Okay, motion.
A motion.
In the court, in the session.
You see here?
Yes.
In a moment, please.
Uh.
In a moment, please.
Thank you. Uh, recommendation to work contracts, P E C, community service, for the dashboard, T B D G funds, self-quick implementation of L W I, that's we started this process, the L W I was over a year ago, you're gonna have, you only had one engineer firm apply back then, L W I, you can't have just one. So we went out, re-advertised, and then he got three, and we scored it, those four of us scored it, and P E C scored the highest.
That's how it's going, it's going down.
So we all do, we already have someone that's going on contract work, has to date a record?
Not L W I, not L W I.
This is a, a word contract.
Just just for the L W I, because you had the period with the fourth of one, and the one that y'all using right now, they did. So, it was him, it was P C, one, five, I saw him, it's, it's master. And it was three of them.
That's for the highest?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great, great.
Motion. Sir.
Great discussion, in a moment, please, in a moment, please.
Okay, on D, recommendation to approve use Act thirty-nine seven appropriations, assault worship courthouse, G P eight, hundred eighty-six dollars thirty-eight cents, this is the same people y'all used last time, of the copper that Jeff. Uh, this is the seventy-five thousand dollars subdivision, representative Adams gave to you all. Uh, my recommendation, I mean, you mentioned I looked at all of us and talking with some of you all, to use all seventy-five thousand dollars.
On the courthouse.
Uh, my reasoning behind that was, I'm gonna go ask them for a hundred fifty thousand next year, I'll just tell them that. But I wanna show them that seventy-five thousand dollars you gave us this year, we spend on the courthouse, and that's the only place that we spend. So, I'm gonna go back and ask them for more money next year, with the, I said, hey, you give us money, we're gonna spend it, that's what we tell you, you know, they wanna preserve the courthouse. I think, a couple of, and you all, all y'all had the same thing on the courthouse.
That you can.
That you gotta do, it's, uh, it's it's this one, and then the right behind it, I'll let y'all look on this first.
Recommendation, motion. And that's the question, in the session, question for the order, in a moment, please.
And E is, to use the same seventy-five thousand to repair the lighting at the courthouse, and that's fifty-eight thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars. Uh, Jeff got a quote last year, I believe, Jeff, in the last year, you pulled that out, yeah, it's been a while, uh, but, there again.
Well, is that quote still good?
Jeff's on call right now. And he talked to him, he just, he just did, help you to part, so Jeff.
That's what it was.
I did, I did talk to him, you know, the price of the lights have not increased, so the quote should be good. Now, uh, I did talk to Kenny, because she's gonna help with installation, whoever installed it, Kenny's gonna get some inmates to help with installation of the lights to reduce some costs on our end, as far as, because now, there's going to be concrete around the rim to try to prevent some of the damage that's happened in the past three years, so.
I want a question, uh.
I want a question, uh. Did, who, who, who will be giving recognition to the, the electrical work, obviously, those?
Ron, that's right, yeah, you're correct. They, they, they just need to help you to part.
And with that being said, I see fifty-eight thousand, they rewiring things or what, when you say lighting, you know what, have a.
So, everything's gonna be on photo cell and timer, and it's actually, all has to be reworked, it, it's, it's a large project.
Do you have, will this exhaust all those stuff? We just.
Eleven thousand. Y'all already threw eleven, I think it's eleven eight for the city of Slaughter.
What I'm saying, will it be here?
Yes.
You have to, you have to, you have to, you have to, you have to.
Yeah, I'm just wrong, so will it be here?
Fifty-five, fifty-five thousand.
Sam, I'm gonna ask you something, do we have to reinvent this, or can we just do the other work project, since, since we would use some of our labor to do it?
Uh, repair lighting equipment, we're jumping repaired, I mean, y'all have, people that.
We, well, we gotta have a company do it, but we're gonna, we're gonna do some mechanic work, so we're gonna do the work project, which you can do without bid, don't do that. Two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, I think that.
Probably can do that, I'm sure, y'all can, it's not that.
I thought, I thought, yeah, so, okay.
Okay, motion?
Motion?
I said.
I know, we're talking about in-ground lighting, you just had courthouse lighting, and that's a big garage special.
So, there, there, there's.
Need to get, you know, a little more.
So, there's nineteen lights that goes under the, that lights, uh, oak trees, that's around the courthouse. They've been inoperable for approximately two years. To me, it just makes a big wild fact to learn that they're all in.
Is this part of the funds that I can use from the seventy-five thousand?
Seventy-five thousand, yeah.
And then, and you have to expend this money, you have to.
Before, before, yeah.
Yeah. They were generous enough to give you yours, midway last year. And again, it's hard to go back and ask for money, if you still see money, there, the amount spent. That's all the way to, and it's, there again, it's a project that Jeff started three, four years ago.
And that could be a clue, I was gonna, create a crop in P C R A. Motion?
Oh, motion. I'm.
All the thing, uh, have a call, work.
Thank you all, thank you all. Y'all made yesterday's week, and a doubt, for three years.
You know, you said. There's something in session, you said.
So, I do have one man, um, if you all would approve to adopt that reservation, closing out the building fund now. Be resolved by the police jury, East Feliciana, Louisiana. Um, convening regular session on the twentieth day of May twenty-twenty-four, that it does hereby authorize closing of the building code fund bank account at Landmark Bank, Fort Louisiana. Additionally, the East Feliciana Parish Police Jury should amend the general fund budget to accept revenues and expenses related to the building department, and they should approve the transfer of previously collected and unused building department funds from the first of January twenty-twenty-four until the present to be deposited into the general fund.
I have a question.
Twenty-five, not twenty-one.
So, Matt, do you understand, Jeff has taken the building sector, but he has to have approval to spend the funds, we want to come, right now, he doesn't need our approval, yes, he's on. Actually, thank you.
Just cause he has his own check, I'm gonna make this, his own budget. This, this is just a bookkeeping cleanup, that's just never been, I don't think, to Jeff's credit, he took the money and, and. He's responsible for that money.
Right.
And it's, it's just, it's, it's a general housekeeping that's come back to these here across the track. There was a question today, he'll, he'll have a budget, just like road bridges, his expenses will come out there, and revenue will be rejected in. It'd just be, and he'll be assigned, but he'll show up, assign his fees coming in, and expenses going out, just, just like today, except it all be funded to the general fund. All of your fees will go to the general fund, which is how it should be.
Thank you, Sam, just while you're on a budget, have you, when you do a working budget, I'm using, you know, you know, as a person, you have a budget, like, this is what you have, and don't have, and can't spend.
We are working on that, and we will, we'll have a finance committee, and we have some information to give to the.
And, you know, and that will be, sounds good.
And you all, hopefully, take that advice, and if you do, you will have all the information you need in your package.
Personally, I know you can always come back to the budget, and all have amended, as.
You all, you all will see the budget every brick month in your package, and whether you look at it or not, it makes you look at it, the information will be there, you all, the income statement will be there, the, the invoices that you approve, pay, everything will be in the package, we give you all.
And what, Pierce, was this, uh, closing his account, is this recommendation from Mr. Matt, his?
This thing from, this thing from the other office, when we talked to him about.
Third party office.
Your work job.
Yes.
It was also discussed, we're there, we're discussing with several different people, I mean, the building line, or Matt, he able to, they won't have the funds to finish out. So, the general fund would have to transfer money into the building fund in order to keep them operating, anyways, so.
But then I, I asked the question earlier, let me make sure I got it right. So, if Jeff puts money from permits into the general fund, and some of that money gets spent, will he, at any point in time, be able to say, Mr. Aaron, what is my balance in?
He'll be able to ask, once we go, and if we wanted it, he'll be able to ask that question every day, not be able to tell him every day.
So, he'll have it.
Oh, yeah, it, it's, it's, it just, the counter doesn't change, all it does is close out the checking account, y'all don't need it. And Jeff shouldn't be in charge of money. Not against Jeff, I mean, just break down, but Jeff will tell you, he doesn't wanna be charged money.
So, basically, you be running a balance here, and, and.
Oh, yes, sir, you will get it, you will get it, you will get the report every month.
And if everything goes right with it, so we need to have it in place, um, like, say, he'll get in, just say, hey, what's my balance? And there's a lot of line items, if you doing the amendment, you have line items on the budget, so you have line items that may, if they do, department's taxes.
So, you know, go to the general fund, we'll know.
And then you're not wanting for residents.
Supposed to stretch the thing.
So, not for us to go with any of those thousands, but, but you can.
It won't be any different than road bridge, stock, what, any, any account that's already dead, can't.
They put a stretch thing in the department, really, don't they?
That's where the line will have, be itemized, people.
Yeah, so if we don't say that they have so much money, we're probably having to permit, or whatever, we'll still have that information, so. Okay.
If you take our recommendation. You will have.
And we said that, um, he's gonna run out of money this month, but, or this year.
This year.
But, was it last year, Jeff, or the year before, that y'all, you gave a hundred thousand dollars to the general fund? Two years in a row?
Two years ago, and then the year before that, the year before that.
His balance.
But, but there again, if, if you can take the work out of his account, why have a counter? He does not have the counter, needs to be funded through the general fund. And, and again, it shouldn't be, no department, of course, I guess you saw it ways, road bridges, general fund is taxed, but anything else should just be funded through the general fund, and that way, you'll have a true number of what you can and cannot do. For, for the whole parish, not, not just one's department.
And I think with some, well, arguing that I was like, people that, this, I don't know about this, Jeff was here, but there was some funding that was to renovate this building. When the renovation was done to the, this, uh, this money, and the, uh, building, uh, it was like a hundred thousand dollars, whatever, it was approved by the jurors. But I know it came before the jury, and I think, it, it may have been two times, but I do know once, maybe not the time he was talking about, cause I think the renovation. Renovations was done before, um, Jeff can have to know.
Before the town.
And the last thing I got, Mr. Kenny, very quickly, Ms. Kristen, we finally found it, we have, where it was no danger.
One thing I did, one thing.
Oh, you were gonna say this?
That the.
No, I was gonna say, and I think, um, you already said. Why you saying that? The, um, budget workshop, hopefully, around the beginning, maybe before the fifteen, I need to say that, but, maybe we can have a budget workshop, um, like, and is it, is it true?
No, we're talking about.
Yeah, we, we found it, uh, Mr. Charles Stein, from the Sunset Office, and I went down to First Court, and, and they had it, so Marty Miller has all this information. So, hopefully, in the next meeting, we'll have it, in price.
We're gonna get to appraisal.
Yes, ma'am, but Marty's doing appraisal right now.
Well, it was one of the stuff, then put it on a recommendation to close the building.
Oh, no, ready? Motion, I say?
You have a deal, what's that?
I'm, I said, yeah. I'm.
What's that, I was saying? And a call, for, 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 Mr. Do, all that to do.
All right, it's been kind of quiet in the past month, hadn't had a whole lot going on. We just been getting in practice for our pre-hurricane season this year. Uh, basic thing, storm, we seen where we were Houston, and Beauregard, Vernon Parish, were getting slammed with the storm coming through. So, we went back and opened up the E O C, we manned it that night at exactly nine-thirty, uh, P M that night. The first nine-one-one call come in from Congrove area, where the straight line wind come through. It come all the way from there, and it left out of River Springs Road. It never pulled up, National Weather Service said it was eighty mile an hour wind, and that's usually the strongest straight line winds that you have. And it hit right there, right all around the Stottlebook's house out there. Hey, Flomio, Eric, Hermitschitz, they were the worst ones, they had trees come down through two mobile homes, one family was in there. The, the mother and the two kids were in it, they paged out fire department, fire department couldn't get down roads, cause all the roads were blocked, so they walked to the fire station to get a truck to come back to have rescue. Nobody was hitting.
On the sixteenth, Lemon B, Niesem.
Those, the major roads, uh, areas were Congrove, Hockaday area, it took the roof off the little, uh, church there, the Jehovah Witness Church, and threw it out across Plain Road. Hey, what damage, mobile homes in there, if you go down Hockaday, at that time, you couldn't, we had thirty-six inch oaks all the way across the road. The fire department got out there, police jury got out there, civilians got out there trying to help open up. Uh, Lemon B, from Lemon, uh, Road, Lemon B, Hockaday, all the way to four twelve, was slammed real hard, and it even went all the way to nine-fifty-five for the damage, and all through there. And it kept going west, the next bad, bad area we had was Niesem Road, it broke off six power poles through there, they didn't get power back to eight o'clock Saturday night, through there, and them go hit twelve trucks in there Saturday morning at seven o'clock, sitting in there working on all that.
They called school, or the, the, they called it, you go down the road.
Hey, we called, I called Dr. Roddy at the school board, I said, you have to cancel school today. I said, they do not have power at Slaughter, or Slaughter Charter, I said, you can't get down the roads over there. And he was like, well, we didn't get any bad weather.
I didn't.
No, the northern part, it run the entire southern half of the parish where it was. So, they canceled school, and he called me back later, he said, I tried to go to Slaughter, you couldn't get there. We had about twenty motor vehicle accidents from people that didn't have bad weather, they moved it on down the road, straight into the trees. I mean, they had one tree got hit three times, before D O T, it's on nineteen, going in the Slaughter. It was on one lane, so they just boogying on down. Hey, when D O T finally got there, got them out of the road, about half the tree, it was the tops, fortunately. But, yeah, we had more people hit, and, and fire departments, we had a medical, and they couldn't get to them. We had Clinton try, we had Ethel try, other ways, and it was physically impossible to find a road, or one they can cut out to get in. So, we contacted D O T D to come in and clear the road, so we can go in there after the patient. And if you lived the northern part of the parish, you didn't even know they had any bad weather. Right? Yeah, but I put a Nexol out that night, hey, I put one out at, uh, about four-thirty the next morning, after we decided to shut all the schools, and to kind of warn people, hey, be careful, there's trees down everywhere, and people were going, well, I've seen that, but I didn't think it was real. I'm not putting out a Nexol if that is serious. So, we got all that, we had a, uh, a tree fell on a house on Day Brown Road, off of nine-fifty-eight. We had, uh, two barns with the roofs completely ripped off, so we had, I think, I.
You had ten on Percy Drift.
Yeah, Percy Drift.
Percy Drift, ten trees down.
We, we had a pile of them, on, on pretty much any road through there, I finished riding even farther out around Congrove area, and found more debris out there today. So, I run since daylight, uh, Friday morning, we never stopped, I run that whole day till late that evening.
They told me to contact the, what, sir, what?
Yeah, National Weather Service, I talked to him down there, uh, third, uh, Friday morning, and he pulled it up, and first thing out of his mouth was, oh, my God, y'all got hit again, and this one's bad. I said, yeah, we had more house damages, and businesses, and barns, and all right here, we had trees come down, take out, on Pace Road, it took out the guy's, uh, pickup truck, and took out his tractor. I mean, that's, that's the ones we know about, I rode again today, and seen some blue tarp's up, we passed more blue tarp's, cause during the April storm, I only got two more pallets of tarp's, and we gave out a full pallet already. Hey, just riding around, seeing people looking at their roof, and you see a limb sticking out of it. So, we tried to tarp everything that we can give the people tarp's for. Uh, tomorrow morning, they making the decision on whether we gonna be put under an emergency declaration, if we don't. Hey, we would have to do all this to re-pick up our own cell. Guys, this is as much as what we had on the wind, that come up here on the side of the claim. So, they, they're hoping we can do, tie this one in with the other one, cause we haven't officially ended the emergency declaration from the April tenth. They told us, do not end it, keep it open, so we threw the paper away on the, cause I hadn't filed it yet. Cause Mr. Lewis actually signed it this morning, and we threw it on away, they said, keep it open, because the requirements are straight line wind, major damage, hey, or tornado touchdown, a fifty percent power outage in your parish, hey, we don't have that. We don't, we're not gonna have a fifty percent power outage. But if we can combine it with the April tenth, we will, cause we had sixty-five percent during that one, on the official numbers that come out. So, we're supposed to hear something, Go Steps make a decision, they go into the governor tomorrow evening, and we should have word back from them. But. Every, anybody, I mean, Kyle, Chrissy, Mr. Richard, hey, it hit all the, hey, all, all the districts running down through there. Chrissy, she lives in the middle of the work, so, Kristen, hey, Ben called me, he said, it's bad. He, he said, anybody hurt, cause you couldn't get nowhere. Ben said, I try and get there, just somebody hurt. Right, we, we, we were fortunate on the, because we had opportunities.
I like to say something, I, I like to put it correctly, that I think most people understand the job that the fire companies enter, you can't, they're really difficult, you know, I don't know, exactly, I love double here. But those guys do phenomenal job.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I've been with them all over the south, and I'm with energy bear company. And hopefully, when they post things on Facebook, where you come, where you at, please, are you ever, you know, they need to realize, if they can't climb their poles in eighty mile an hour there, and coming down rain, it's got, it's got to get way down, and it takes them a while, but they actually get started pretty quick, so we all need to give them a word of praise. a word of praise in the job that they do do.
Like Mr. Richard said, the wind got so bad. That night, we actually put an order out, no law enforcement response, no fire department, because they could not see the roads no more. They were getting stuck, but they couldn't see where the highway was. So we shut it down to die down enough where they wouldn't get injured or killed. As soon as it opened back up, they said, okay, we can see again. We started them back out.
I, uh, I want to say this. I, you know, I still got people in my area that don't have that crystal.
Oh, yeah.
That don't have.
Yep.
And so I called somebody named Deb Coe, and that I know, and it works off of that. And he says, and I ain't gonna say where it was, but we're just gonna say it's a little bit more upscale. And you know how they work. They get the mass out first and then they start working it out. So when he pulls up to do an assessment, instead of say, thank you for coming, he got cursed out. Why you haven't been here? Now, you know, people supposed to be smarter than that.
Uh, I sent a email out today, Congresswoman, the U S Congresswoman, Letlow, is coming here Wednesday at nine A M to the police jury office here. Hey, I like to have a good many people here. But when we met last time, right after the, uh, storm, April tenth, they had four of us here over in St. Francisville. And I like to have more here. This is the time we need to ask her if we need stuff. We need assistance. Hey, we need another debris truck. We're hours down, and we got all this. If we have to pay for this, we're not gonna have the money to pay for all this debris cleanup out of pocket.
Does this room survive?
Yes. Yes, sir. Cause they called me the other day. Can we do it? Yeah, let me, I checked, we've reached it today. Hey, is this room open? Cause it's a little bit easier to do here rather than the E O C. We got more parking room and all that. But she won't be here that long. Come in, meet her. I invited, uh, Kayla Klein Peter and, uh, Darrell Adams to come over and meet with us all. Cause this affecting everybody with these storms. I mean, we've had two major storms in our parish and every bill got hit with both of them. So they're looking at us right now with a lot of this. And I meet with the governor, uh, during the finance committee meeting we have. That's why I told him, I said, I can't be here for that. Cause we having to meet down there at the state Capitol with him. So, but other than that, that's it.
Excuse me. Try a truck out in, or we just get.
We're, we're fixing to be in.
Um, the Chamber of Commerce along Pelican State Credit Union will host a house budgeting made easy on June eleventh at one seventy nine oh three, Highway ten, St. Francisville, Louisiana. But that's the church just going right outside of Gadsden. It's all, we should sit there if you want. So if you're spending, come and let me know and I can help you to get, um, signed up for that. The chamber will also meet on June thirteenth from eight o'clock to nine o'clock at Auden Regional Library. That's on Woodville Street. That's all I have.
Yeah.
The library?
Yeah.
Okay.
On Bank Street. I just wanted to. On Bank Street, real update, and you all see that. Um, follow us on Facebook and Facebook. I'd love to see some of the jurors that, uh, want to learn.
Fay Talbot, I just want to thank the police jury for the storm debris pickup. That man did a phenomenal job. I mean, he picked up limbs, half the size of this room, and then came back and picked up little widdy pieces. I mean, I didn't have anything left. I hope everybody was, had as good a job as I did. Of course, I was watching.